We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. I will ask the appellant to step forward, be sworn in, and be seated in the chairs to my right. And then we will ask the appellant to let us know whatever he or she would like us to know in favor of their case. We ask them to confine their presentation to ten minutes if at all possible. We will then ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the room who is in favor of the appeal, and then anyone in the room who is in opposition to the appeal. Following that testimony, we ask those people to confine their testimony to five minutes if at all possible. We are then, we'll check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office, any clarifications, and then if any information has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to do that, not introduce new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case prior to moving on to the next one. The first case this evening, I am going to step down because I have a conflict of interest, and Mr. Monahan will chair the case.
You're even moving into the big seat.
Okay, well, we'll open the hearing on case 0224, 2024, Neville Street. The applicants are Roger and Susan Phillips. If you're here, come on up. Can I ask you to swear to tell the truth? And let us know who you are.
Would you like me to be sworn in?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Great. So...
My name is Roger Phillips, and I'm here with my wife, Susan, and we're owners and occupants of 10 Neville Street, and have applied for variance so that we could build in addition to the existing porch on the rear of our house. Want to give a little bit of background information. The lot itself is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot in the sense it's got an 80-foot frontage. And in this single-family zoning, normally a 100-foot frontage is required. And the lot size is 7,200 square feet rather than the 12,500 that's required. The house is a two-bedroom ranch where we bought it as a retirement home. We always lived on Main Street in Concord for almost 40 years in a six-bedroom house, so we're downsizing to the two-bedroom. The, but the lot is just the right size as far as we're concerned from this point of view, because it doesn't take very long to mow the lawn, nor does it take long for either the shuttling or the snowblower to accomplish its task. The part of the hardship itself, of course, is the size of the lot. In the written material, it says, "I thought I might need an area variance too," but David Hall was kind enough to go through and decided I really only needed variance for the concern he was 25-foot setback. The, of course, even though it's a smaller lot, it still requires the same setback as a larger lot would. The existing back porch, which is on the house, is very small and doesn't have much utility value. It's about 13 feet wide because it has a doorway, plus it had, and from the house out towards the back lot is five and a half feet inside. The existing porch, I think, was built small so that it would stay within the 25-foot setback. And I know when the carport and that back porch, when they were built, they were built, the house was initially built, I think, in 2020, and a few years after the carport was put in, there is a building pyramid on file, but I don't know the year, but probably about 20 years ago. The porch isn't big enough to accomplish very much, and we have a couple of folding chairs and a table. But what brought all of this on is that we have a handicapped grandchild. And he requires a wheelchair for his mobility. And because of our age and the recognition of some safety features, we decided to put in a lift in the carport that goes up to the back door and to that porch. And we've raised the porch about a foot. And the idea at that time was we thought maybe they'd would deck or something off the backside of it, but that would also require a variance. But as we lived with it since June of last year, we really think a three-season porch would be really helpful. Number one, it would give him some room and mobility within the area. And it, the, obviously, the access with the lift that goes onto that porch, and with the porch floor going up about a foot higher than it had been initially, that's just straight access right into the, into the home. The porch is so small that it doesn't have as much utility as other neighbors have in the area. I mean, it's good enough at Thanksgiving and Christmas, I'll even put a carcass out there to stay cool. But it really, there isn't much room. You couldn't easily, oh, it does make a nice observation area, by the way. I can stand there and look out towards my garden and see the groundhogs come out from underneath the shed and then filter the green tomatoes before they got a chance to rip into any of the cucumber plants. But other than that, it really doesn't have much use as compared to other porches in the neighborhood. That's one of the reasons why I think there's a hardship for this particular thing. We only want to add eight feet to the existing porch. And if you have the plant in front of you with the six feet from the house and plus the eight, that would give at least sufficient space to make the porch more usable. And I think the general purpose of the ordinance, of course, would be protected because it's still a single-family use and would just give utility for this small addition. And the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. And I think in your packet, you receive the notice of no objection or the assent from all of the direct neighbors. There was also one neighbor across the street who wasn't, didn't have to be directly occupied.
We'll read this into the record.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, I have them.
Okay, sorry. If the panel reviews the other properties in the same zoning area, it's obvious that sheds and pools and other things are within the 25-foot setback. I would have to indicate that, in fact, my neighbor's garage is two feet over the boundary line into the neighbor's property. And that's just because I think this was a long time ago, and even though it was all surveyed, the initial building probably didn't require lots quite as large as they do now. Bottom line is, I think that 20-foot setback is more honored in the breach than it is in its observance in the neighborhood. I don't say that because I say that just because someone else has done it. We should. I only indicated, only bring it to the panel's attention just because it's not going to set an unusual precedent. And it would be consistent with the uses that other neighbors have in the area. That's all I have for the presentation. Can I ask anything? I didn't want to read what I've already written and what you've seen, but I just wanted to give you that background. And would be willing to answer any questions anyone might have.
Are there questions from the board?
I might have misheard. What year did you say the house was built, too?
I think it was built in the year 2000. No, I take it back. 20 years ago. Yeah, I'm sorry. It was built 24 years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but it's a...
The house was built 20 years? I thought you said 1920.
No, it wasn't 1920.
But so if the house was built, the current zone was in the current, so it was built, was it built entirely in compliance with, but how was it built? Did it need a variance when it was built?
I do not know the answer to that.
It looks like it made a setback.
There are none on file. From what we can tell, and I do a deep dive, I believe what he stated earlier, the house, and then there was a permit for the carport, and that was all built within dimensional standards when it was put in.
But he said that the, it didn't have the frontage, so one of it needed it.
Oh, I didn't ask about that because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot as far as we're concerned.
Oh, the lot's not, I got you.
Right.
Even if, if it was vacant, the lot was not, okay. I got you.
Could you just refresh my memory, what neighborhood, what area this is in?
I'm sorry. Here we go.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture.
Well, when the wind is just right, we have a beautiful sense from T-Bone's Restaurant.
Oh, okay, okay, south end, okay.
So it's South Main Street. Rockingham runs off of South Main, and then the first street off of that is Donovan, and we are the last street on the right off of Donovan.
And you're in the back corner, basically, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm surprised there was even an empty lot there. Maybe another house.
I'm surprised it's 25-foot setback, not a 15.
I think many, for instance, the lot at 40, that house, that's a whole other lot that could be built at some time, I suppose. I mean, those other lots are larger than what's required if they wanted to. I would, I think that's a possibility.
And may I?
Yes.
The lot looks smaller than the other lots in the neighborhood. Am I perceiving that correctly?
I think that's, I think it's the smallest lot in the neighborhood. Yeah.
Thank you.
Which I think is part of the hardship.
Okay, Mark, any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, thank you.
Just one other thing I'd like to say. I just want to thank the staff because I had a heck of a time trying to get on the website and complete it. And everyone there has been very, very helpful and very professional, but really helpful to indicate this is what you need to do. And the assistant there put my application in for me because although I can scan things and do things on the computer, I didn't get any success with this particular program, for whatever it's worth, but.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone opposed? Anything from code enforcement?
No, I think Mr. Phillips covered it well. You do have some emails to read in.
I have a bundle of documents here from neighbors. I'll read it into the record. First from David and Patricia Daniels. They are butters within 300 feet, and they support the application. Also, Robert Patton, also within 300 feet of the applicant and supports the petition. Matthew Slater and Deborah Slater and Laura Baron, also within 300 feet, support the application. Derek Ruiz, I believe, at 40 Neville Street, is within 300 feet and has no objections to the requested setback. Tracy Warner, also at 300 feet of the application, has no objections to the requested setback variance. And Ed Mullin, also within 300 feet, has no objections to the request. So I think that is the entire south end of Concord. So, great. Okay, Mark, you want to start?
I don't have a problem with it. I don't see, or I do see the hardship in trying to provide an accessibility feature. It's not out of character. It will not affect property values. I have no objections.
Right. Laura?
I think the hardship arises from the particularly small size of the lot, particularly given the other lots in the neighborhood. I don't think it's going to diminish surrounding property values. I don't see any particular gain to the public from denying the variance, particularly where all of the neighbors appear to be in favor of it. And I agree with Mark that it's not going to alter the character of the neighborhood, so I would be inclined to grant it as well.
Andrew?
I agree with all of that, and I'd also add the existing three-season porch is very small. So I think even with this addition, it's still going to be a pretty modestly sized porch, which I think is a pretty typical feature and would be considered reasonably used, so I agree.
Brenda?
I agree with all three.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval for the reasons previously stated, unless you need more. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, second. Brenda?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 The motion's passed. Good luck with your addition.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And if there's no objection, I'm going to get your back.
Yeah, don't get too comfortable.
It's the hot seat.
Thank you, Jim. This one's the garage.
The next case this evening is case 0225, 23 Gladstone Street, RM Medium Density Residential District. The owner is Margaret J. Hamilton Removable Trust, and the applicant is seeking a variance from Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow a two-foot setback from side property line, from the side property line where a 15-foot setback is required. Is anyone here representing the trust? Please come forward. You swear to tell the truth? Yeah, nothing but the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
Would you identify yourself with the record as you testify, please?
Yes, thank you. I'm Margaret Hamilton, owner of 23 Gladstone Street. I've lived there almost three years. The house is approximately 70 years old. It's a kind of a unique property in the city, which I feel very fortunate to be the keeper of at this point. There's an established driveway on the property already, and it's quite close to the line as is. My intention and my hardship is that I have a place to store my vehicles or my equipment. There are rock stone walls along the front of the property.
I'll get you a picture. There you go.
Oh, thank you, which limits, I've studied the property as long as I've lived there and wondered where could I put a garage that would make the most sense for accessibility to the house. There's no access to my, to the other side of my yard, so it wouldn't make any sense to try to put a garage on the other side of the house and because of the stone walls. So I would love a place to store my investments to protect them, ease of accessibility for me as I age. So I'm just asking to use the established driveway as is, but to build this building. I, it's approximately 18 and a half feet wide at the top of the driveway, which would be to the left of your screen. And then the property starts to incline up. There's currently a man-made retaining wall there that I would use probably as the back boundary of the garage, and I would just like to stay within kind of the footprint of the established driveway for the building, which the proposed building is 14 feet wide. So within that 18 and a half feet, you know, I'm thinking it would be centered on that, but that's my sort of proclivity to be balanced, I guess.
You're talking about centering the garage on the driveway?
On the driveway, yeah. So, and that puts me within about two feet to the boundary line. I probably could snug it up to that wall along the driveway, which would maybe give me a couple extra feet toward the boundary line, but.
Do you plan to use, you're building it as a garage. A car could go into it, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Can I, would you mind standing up and pointing where exactly?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So right here is the current driveway. You see the boundary lines in the 18 and a half feet or like... You see the boundary lines in the 18 and 1/2 feet, or like, right around here. It varies in width as it goes down the driveway currently, but it is wide at the top.
And you mentioned the grade going up. I, I know the grade goes up to the west. Does it also go up to the south from you?
It, yeah, but it's steep all the way along the backside of the house. There's like, there's like a little meandering path.
So you're sort of in a bowl there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You couldn't put it behind you because it's all, it's all inclined.
I wouldn't even like ask to put it behind me. Like, that'd be crazy amount of like moving earth, and I'd like to be, you know, keep the aesthetic as...
Google Street View has a better pan shot of it. I have, I can try to get there.
It'd probably be very expensive to try to move the retaining wall even, to bring it closer to the house.
It actually would break my heart, too, because the original person that built the house, like, he built all these stone walls by hand, and they're very unique, and it's part of the charm of the property, so...
I don't know where she is, sorry.
No, I feel like aesthetically, the garage would be setback far enough also that it wouldn't be a visual impediment to anybody that care more.
So it would just be a one-car garage?
Just a one-car.
Do you have a, do you have a contractor now, or you're kind of seeing?
It's a Reed's Ferry building, so it's, they pre-build it. You know, I intend to put a concrete foundation, and then they come and they build it on the pad.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? Anyone?
David, can you just pan out?
Oh, sorry, yep.
It's hard to see the neighborhood.
So there's 23 Gladstone. If I can go a little further if you want.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't need you to go that far. Thank you.
It's kind of a dead end.
It is a dead-end street, yes.
It's just off of Franklin.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Have you had any big, because it would be pretty close to your neighbor's house, if I'm reading that right, have you had any feedback from them on that?
Yeah, I've spoken to all the neighbors. The direct neighbor it would most impact, Brian Brophy, has been wonderful and, you know, basically granted his permission to put it that close to the line. I believe he, he drafted a letter and sent me a copy. I believe David was going to attach it to the file.
Oh, you have it, okay.
We have a couple of emails, which I will read in. One is from Brian and Megan Brophy.
He's at 15?
He's at 17. The numbering is very unusual on the street as well.
Very good. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to discuss this with our alternates before we started, but Brenda, Brenda, will you vote on this one?
Sure.
And...
Yep.
I'll ask you to vote on the next one, sorry. Okay. Yeah, they're going to vote on everything, I suppose, but it's not quite kosher. Very good. Is there, I guess that'll do it.
Sorry, one other question. On city sewer, is there something there?
Oh, city sewer and water.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? There, as I said, there were two communications. One was from Andrew Porat, who lives at 25 Gladstone Street, and he is 100% in favor of the proposed variance. And the other is from Brian and Megan Murphy, and, or excuse me, Brophy, and they are at 17 Gladstone Street, and they are also in favor of the variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No comments from code enforcement?
I just want to clarify, we didn't make a get-apply plan yet because I, she honestly wanted to get the approval first, so the variance will be no closer than two feet. If she chooses to move it further away from that, she has that ability.
Okay. But we could, I mean, doesn't, we can rely on her representation about the approximate size.
Right, but it will, it will not be any closer than two feet, or she's coming back here first.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Perkins, how do you see this one?
I don't have a problem with it. I can see the hardship in the landscape and the topography and wanting to maintain that retaining wall that's been there. If the retaining wall was newer, it would have been smarter to put it closer to the house, but it's, it's not, and that would be expensive to change, so I see the hardship for it, and the neighbor next door is in acceptance of it, so I'd be willing to grant it.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I agree. I was, you know, at first a little stuck to go when I was looking at, but the topography, there'd be very expensive to try to move a garage somewhere else, and then the question is, is there a reason to have a garage? I think it is. I think if the neighbor, you know, came in and spoke against it, that would be a little more challenging, but they don't seem to have a problem with this, so I, so I, I agree.
Ms. Specter-Morgan?
I agree with Andrew and Brenda about the hardship. This additional piece of information was extraordinarily helpful, because when I was at home, I wasn't seeing it. I don't think it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood at all. It looks like a residential neighborhood with lots of garages. I can't imagine adding a one-bedroom garage is going to diminish surrounding property values, and I don't see any gain to the public at large from denying the variance. I think substantial justice is done by granting it as well, so I would be in favor of granting it.
Mr. Monahan?
I agree with my colleagues and have nothing to add.
I also agree and also have nothing to add. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would move to approve for the reasons previously stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted.
Thank you.
After a long and arduous evening, we come to the last, the last item...
The most difficult one of the night.
Yeah, the last item on the agenda. If I can find my copy of the, oh, there it is.
Last case on the agenda, sir.
Last case on the agenda.
See, it was a trap.
And we're going to be here till 11 o'clock tonight with administrative minutiae. Case 0228, 17 North Curtisville Road, R.S. single-family residential district. Owner is the Russe Family 2015 Trust. The applicant is requesting a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
Sure, I'm Jody Russe, I'm the homeowner. This is my builder.
My name is William Paris.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Russe?
That I would like to put, make my basement into an accessory dwelling unit. We're not changing any outside walls or anything, and I was told the reason that I need to come to see you is because of the neighborhood that we're in.
Actually, any neighborhood in the city requires a special exception for an ADU.
Oh, okay, so I did not know that.
Yeah.
So that's why we're here.
My understanding from reading your application, that's true what I just said.
Good things.
I said it with such authority, it had to be true. I understand that essentially what you would like to do is refit part of the existing house as a, as an ADU.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. And there's no new construction?
No, it's, it's all inside.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
You're on city water and sewer? City water and sewer. David, what are the supplemental standards of Article 28.5? Do we need to worry about them?
If you want to take my word, we've met them all, I've worked with the contractor to make sure the square footage worked.
I take your word, I'm good.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
That's all it is, is about, someone has to live on the property and so on.
Correct. No, the owner understands that, but all the dimensional requirements to the ADU have been met.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. So it's basement level, but it has a separate entrance?
It's a separate entrance, it's a walkout basement.
Okay.
I'm seeing a garage on Google Street View. So where's this floor plan that was submitted in relation?
It's behind, well, we did an addition on the original house.
Okay.
So you see that L, that's the addition.
Oh, got it, okay, okay.
Underneath the back, underneath the backside of the L, basically that footprint, actually, the L is actually a footprint of the, of the ADU.
Yep, got it.
And the garage is under the main house?
Yeah, I see that now, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like us to know?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start this with Mr. Davies. How do you see it, sir? Oh, any questions, or anything from code enforcement?
No, sir.
The record will show there was no one in the audience to speak for or answer. I got a little over my skis there, I apologize. Mr. Davies?
I'm not really seeing an issue. Could we condition owner occupancy like we've been...
That's implied.
Just on ADU. Okay. I don't have any issues.
Very good.
Yeah, I think it's fine, it checks all the ADU boxes, so thank you for coming.
Ms. Specter-Morgan?
Based on the representations in the application, it appears all the special exception criteria are met, so I would be in favor.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I mean, it probably at some point they'll streamline these, so you might not have to come here for something like this, but, but I certainly agree that the criteria are met.
I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would.
Go ahead.
I would move approval on the basis that all of the special exception criteria are met.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, a special exception is granted, you're all set.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Do I hear a motion to approve last month's minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes, please.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? And do I hear a motion to approve the findings of fact that were submitted from last month?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Do we have any other business to come before us this evening?
Yes, sir, we have two items. In our diligence of transferring powers to planning, we've been looking at a lot of our rules and procedures, and one of them has come up that in our minutes review, that we are not abiding by the law, maybe, but...
Oh, that.
Yeah, that. When we send you the minutes to review and we make edits through email, that's not supposed to happen that way. The edits need to come the following month to this board in a public hearing, is what we're told.
Oh, really?
In order to make those edits official.
I always, when I make edits, forward them to everyone.
Well, that's a violation of the right to know law, but we won't talk about that.
It is.
Well, I am in trouble once and, once again.
And that's your lawyer, so...
Yeah.
So...
She's my mouthpiece.
So we will send them...
And I take the fit.
You can't ever comment or say a word when you do that.
So we will send draft minutes out again, but...
And I should stop circulating to everyone?
Just make your notes on it, and then we come in next month where we have a chance for you.
Wait until we discuss it here.
I thought I was being so clever to make it streamlined.
Well, it makes sense to us to...
Much more time efficient to do it like you are.
And then the other item that Laura Specter-Morgan asked about was the rules and procedures in regards to our alternates.
But I read them and I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it?
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else has any discussion for that, then?
What was the issue?
I know. Oh, okay. So the issue is that alternates are allowed to participate when they're not voting members according to the rules of procedure. And so you guys always participate like right up until the point where we, and so I just wanted to make sure that the rules of procedure said that, and they do.
Oh, good. Yes, yes, because I've asked that a couple of times, like, is it okay for me to add input or ask questions? Because sometimes I feel like my experience adds to the conversation.
Definitely.
So, okay.
Well, that's why you're here.
That's why I figured you said yes, it was okay for me to come.
Of course it was.
And the final one is, I think Felicia was introduced to everyone, if not, I apologize, Felicia French-Croll from...
How do you spell?
Michigan.
I can spell French, how do you spell Croll?
C-R-O-L-L.
Straightforward.
She's our new zoning and, uh, city planner for zoning.
Assistant city planner.
Assistant city planner for zoning, taking over the zoning administrative duties. We'll be tag teaming probably for three months or so, maybe, we'll see how the training goes.
So then, then after that, Amber is going to take over as the, as the...
No, Amber is the city planner.
I'm the city planner.
Oh, you'll take, but first, you're going to take over for zoning?
Right, she will be sitting in this chair at some point.
Essentially, she's the new...
Zoning administrator.
They changed the titles.
She'll be the new zoning admin, what was the zoning administrator?
Yeah, she's the new zoning administrator, just has a new title, Assistant City Planner Zoning, and it's under the Planning Division, which brings me to the rules and procedures of the zoning board of adjustment, still need to be revised, so that...
That's right.
Every place where it says Code Administrator, I'm assuming that's City Planner.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that for sure.
Yeah, and then I'm, I found, I found a couple of other edits that refers to Historic District Commission, of which we don't have one, that needs to say Heritage Commission, and there's a couple of typos in here, so...
So we will make a draft edit to changes to the rules and procedures for your review. We'll send them out prior to the meeting, but please do not discuss them until we get to the meeting.
All right.
So you can send them, and we can read them, but we can't reply, basically?
Correct.
What is the status of the, at some point, maybe three or four months ago, you set out some...
Oh, thank you, yes. Findings of fact.
Yeah, findings of facts, prototype forms for that.
So we have a meeting when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're going to be working with legal and just trying to figure out how we're going to present that, or what we want, would like to see. I really appreciate your help with that, Laura, and the team is learning well. They're trying to throw little tidbits in their, their motions and things, so that is helping us tremendously, but ultimately, I'd like to think we're going to sign those the night of the meeting, moving forward, in an ideal world.
And you just, the board will sign off on the findings of fact?
That night.
So that you can issue the letters and not, and have to go back on what you said?